All right, we will call it to order here in the North Canton Planning Commission meeting. It is September, well, no, that's not right. It's October 2nd.
There you go.
Uh, where'd the month go? It's October 2nd, 2024, and it is 6:00 PM. Uh, the first thing on the agenda tonight is, of course, a roll call. Randa, if you could.
Mr. Daupes.
Here.
Mr. Mahousen.
Here.
Mr. Sarah.
Here.
Mr. LaPage. Mr. Reed.
Here.
All right. Next on the agenda is our minutes for consideration. This would be, uh, submit the August 7th, 2020. Is that correct, August or is this? I think I might be looking at the wrong document. I'm sorry. Give me one second. It would be the October or September 4th, 2024, meeting minutes for approval. So if there are no comments on that, I would, uh, entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the September meetings.
We have a motion.
I'll second the approval of September 4th, 2024 meeting minutes.
We have a second. Uh, Randa, if you could do a roll call, please.
Mr. Mahousen.
Yes.
Mr. Reed.
Yes.
Mr. Sarah.
Yes.
Mr. Daupes.
Yes. All right. So the first, uh, item on the agenda here from a planning perspective is an adjudication hearing for application CUSE dash 24 dash 6. This is at 1415 Pittsburgh Avenue Northwest, North Canton, Ohio, 44720. It's a conditional use to permit a drive-through and 24-hour operation for a demolition rebuild of a new Sheetz gas station. Um, so at this time, uh, we would ask the applicant to come forward and, uh, present the project. Anyone in the public that would like to speak tonight, if you could make your way to the podium and state your name and address, uh, before you begin for the record.
Uh, good evening. Ryan Balko, I'm with, uh, with Sheetz. I'm their regional entitlement manager up here in North Region, uh, 1415 Jackson Avenue, uh, Acton.
Okay.
Um, so I'm just, I'm just gonna give you a high, high overview of this. Um, we as a company usually go back and, uh, touch our stores about every 15 years, plus or minus. Um, I know that we just recently did, uh, the one over there in Jackson Township. I know we're rebuilding up here in Green, uh, just around the corner. Um, and really, it's just kind of, uh, our opportunity to, first of all, make sure that we, we have units that aren't kind of falling, uh, in despair, uh, and really bring, uh, some oversights, I guess, up, up to the standards of the new stores that we're building. So it's kind of what we're looking to do here. Um, so for, you know, it's gonna be a, pretty much a complete scrape, uh, of building, uh, the canopies, the USTs, uh, underground storage tanks, um, and essentially rebuilding from ground up, um, some of the, you know, advantages of doing a rebuild, uh, just from like the engineering perspective, this will have a lot of the existing, uh, utilities in place and everything, so it's a little more straightforward and quick. Uh, keep the drive access, uh, curb cuts in the same location, uh, but we'll be building a, our, our G prototype store, which is approximately like 6,100 square feet, um, H-word food inside, vegan store, um, seating on the inside and outside, um, and then we'll be redoing the gas, the gas pumps and canopies and the new standard, the new standard that we have, uh, bringing all the signage up to date. Um, and then, uh, where we can, on sites like this, uh, we, we do have, uh, the drive-through amenity that we'd like to include, um, so that's in addition to what's existing, uh, there, and then we'll also be re- rebuilding the, the car wash. But, uh, I guess generally, everything is sort of in the same spot. Building's in the same spot, uh, canopies are, are in the same spot, car wash is in the same spot. It's generally the same layout of the site, um, it's just there, there will be the additional, uh, drive-through features, um, that we have. So I'd happy to answer any questions, um, that you all have, but it's a high level overview.
Okay, thank you. Um, at this time, I think we'll have Martin, I believe, give comments from the city's perspective on this.
Thank you, Chairman. Uh, the applicant has met with the city staff where we did review the project. Each of the comments have been incorporated into the supplemental before you tonight. The project is located in the GBB zoning district. You know, as, as was indicated here, the project is very similar to the existing. Each of the departments, as I mentioned, have reviewed it. I do have a couple of conditions here that we would ask that, uh, why did the review and the staff is recommending an approval with, uh, three conditions? And I can read those off for the conditional use item when we get to that, but generally, we do find that the project is in substantial compliance with the zoning code and, as I mentioned, recommend an approval.
Okay. All right. Um, questions from commission members?
The, uh, drive-through will be located on the west side.
Yeah, more, more so. Well, so what, um, so off to the left there, the page that's, uh, they'll pull through that, that order lane. Uh, and there's, there's an order point that's, it's exactly the same thing that's like on the inside of the Sheetz door. It's, it's touchpad and everything, not like, uh, it's not McDonald's setup or like you're talking to somebody. Uh, but there is the option to press a button to get help if you're, if you're having issues, but it's not, it, it's, uh, uh, can handle it. And then they, then you pull, yeah, you pull through, and then there's, uh, two people like this, uh, sort of on the bottom right of, of the building there.
Okay.
Thanks.
Any other questions from commission members? Okay. At this time, um, there's any, anybody else in the audience that would like to speak on this item? Okay. All right. Well, if there's no other comments or questions from commission members or the city's perspective, um, I would entertain a motion on this. Martin, do you happen to have the one that would apply to the condition you have for the conditional use? Does it apply to that or is it just for the development review, the conditions?
The conditions would, we could actually place them on both, really.
Okay.
For each of those items, they're similar.
Do you wanna just read those at this time so everyone understands those before we make a motion?
Absolutely. So the first condition would be obtain the building and demolition permits prior to commencing construction, and that would include the cement of the exterior lighting as well as the landscape plan. The condition number two is obtain the buster approvals prior to demolition and construction of the underground fuel tanks through the North Canton Fire Department. And the last one is schedule a pre-construction meeting prior to any demolition activities.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Can I ask, do you have an approximate date that you thought you, if it goes forward, if anybody goes forward? When you might start, uh, your work?
Have you guys?
Or is that too premature to, to share?
It's not, it's not, yeah, it's not pretty, um, you've gone through engineering.
Hmm, I, I'm gonna say I can't. I'm filling in for the actual engineer.
Oh, yeah, yeah. So, yeah, 2025.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a, you know, it shuts the store down for about five months.
I was just curious.
But, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
No problem. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Okay. So Mr. Van Gundy outlined the conditions there. Um, so yes, if there's no other questions from commission members, I would entertain a motion, um, for the conditional use permit, which is application number CUSE 24 dash 6.
I make a motion to approve the development review for conditional use permit based on Mr. Van Gundy's, uh, three conditions, which is permit, fire department, and pre-construction meeting.
Okay, we have a motion.
I'll second the motion.
We have a second. So just to be clear, this is for application CUSE dash 24 dash 6. This is conditional use to permit a drive-through and 24-hour operation for the demolition rebuild of a new Sheetz gas station. Randa, roll call, please.
Who's the second?
Uh, uh, Mr. Reed.
Mr. Sarah?
Yeah.
Mr. Daupes?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Mahousen?
Yes.
All right. Okay, the next portion is just continuation of this project. This is the public hearing for the development review, application number DPLN dash 24 dash 10, 1415 Pittsburgh Avenue Northwest, North Canton, Ohio, 44720. This is the development review for conditional use permit application CUSE dash 24 dash 6 to allow a drive-through, 24-hour operation for demolition rebuild of new Sheetz gas station. Um, since we just went over this, um, I don't know if anybody has any further questions regarding the development review from the commission's perspective.
Is there any city conditions involved here?
The staff would ask that we place the same conditions on the conditional use, and I, Chairman, I'm happy to read those off again for the record.
Okay.
Uh, condition number one, obtain the building and demolition permits prior to commencing construction to, which would include the cementals for the exterior lighting and the landscape plan. And number two is obtain the buster approvals prior to demolition and construction of the underground fuel tanks through the North Canton Fire Department. And condition number three, schedule a pre-construction meeting prior to any demolition activities.
Thank you, Mr. Van Gundy.
My pleasure.
Um, I would have to ask if anybody else in the audience would like to speak on this Okay? So if there's no more questions, uh, would entertain a motion for the development review application, DPLN dash 24 dash 10.
Make a motion to accept it as proposed.
We have a motion. I would second. Motion and a second, so, uh, Randa, if you could do a roll call, please.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Mahousen?
Yes.
Mr. Daupes?
Yes.
Mr. Sarah?
Yes.
All right. Thank you very much. Um, next on the agenda is ordinance dash 2024 and ordinance amending chapter 1136 Main Street Districts Regulations, specifically section 1136 dot 05, schedule of permitted uses of the codified ordinances of the city of North Canton in order to allow hotels as a conditional use in Main Street Center districts. So this is coming back from our last commission meeting. Um, I believe maybe Mr. Young is going to be discussing this this evening. Okay. Feel free to take it away.
All right. Um, this is, like the chairman said, coming back to you all, um, just to make it clear for the record, the proposal is to, um, make hotels a conditional use only in the Main Street Center. Uh, I understand there was a typographical error last time.
Yes.
But it is only intended for the Main Street District. Um, the primary question that at least I've received both from council and hearing about your previous meeting, um, was, is there a specific project? Uh, no, there is not a specific project. Um, the city has just recognized the potential value that a hotel could bring to the city, um, particularly since city council's previous passage of a transient occupancy tax, um, which with our very limited hotels in the city currently raises, uh, far more than we ever anticipated it doing. Um, and so there's a real potential for a hotel to be an economic boon to the city, both literally in patronizing businesses and through increasing tax revenue without actually increasing tax rates for the public. Um, there was a specific inspiration for this, which was we took a tour of the DePaul next door, uh, facility, world headquarters, and, um, they showed us their training center, which trains people from all over the world, and, uh, the gentleman giving us the tour was telling us how, um, the company pays to bus people from Jackson Township every single day to and from the hotels. Um, and we thought, man, wouldn't it be great if there was a hotel just across the street somewhere that they, A, wouldn't have to bus them, and B, those people might patronize North Canton restaurants or North Canton businesses when they're out of work for the evening? Um, so that's really the inspiration. There is no specific developer or person that has come and asked us for it. It's more that we feel there's an opportunity and we'd like to make it a possibility.
Sure.
We are aware that hotels can be disruptive, which is why we chose to suggest a conditional use, not a use permitted by right.
Okay. All right. Commission members, any extension of thoughts from our last meeting?
Yeah, um, I guess, you know, we, we tabled it because we asked for the city to define what the Main Street District is, providing a definition of hotel. Personally, I don't think we saw it come back to us defining this, and, and that concerns me. Um, you know, when we go and look at the master plan that was done, to my knowledge, there isn't anything in here that says hotel.
Correct.
And, and this was developed by the city residents and the leaders of the city. So that concerns me that we're looking at taking our schedule of permitted use and, and just interjecting hotel in the Main Street Center District. So that really, I mean, we, we do have roughly 10-plus hotels within a one-to-two-mile area of the city of North Canton, with, I believe, one hotel in the city of North Canton, very small, and we have a bed and breakfast, I think, also on Main Street. There's one. Now, obviously, that's not, you know, that, that's why I guess we didn't define what hotel refers to. You know, I, you know, I had to look back, and I guess I've been on this planning commission for eight years, and, and I can recall of another place that wanted to try to change and have a free, or I should say, a, a zoning district of their own, and they wanted to propose a hotel, and that failed. So, um, my, my big concern is, is that we're not defining what hotel means, and, and that could mean a lot of things, of different type of a structure. we do have chapter 1136, which is the Main Street District Regulations, and we do go in that chapter, and we define things in there about, I'll get you an example. Hey, I'm sorry. I said the wrong chapter. Chapter 1145, under conditional use regulations. We do define items in there as an example, bed and breakfast.
We do have hotels defined in the definitions, and it's, it's a building in which lodging is provided and offered to the public for compensation on a daily rate in which is open to the occupant, which is open to occupancy for periods of less than one week. So in definitions, we have that.
In the definitions, I, I, I agree. I did find that.
Yeah.
But I'm not finding anything that's describing it in the conditional use regulations. And that's what I thought is why we tabled it the last time, because we wanted a further definition of what we're defining a hotel to be.
We tabled it because the discrepancy between Main Street Center and Main Street Districts were.
Yeah, that was the big issue, was there was a discrepancy of.
That was the other part, but if you look at the meeting minutes, it says very specifically that we approved was, say, defines what Main Street District is and providing a definition of hotel. That's what we just approved this evening.
For definition of hotel in the, you know, what is a hotel sense would be the chapter 1125 of, that chapter applies to all, the whole zoning code. What, whenever it says hotel, what does that mean? Or defining hotels in the sense of as a conditional use, what special regulations do they have to comply with? Um, they are already in chapter 1145. In 1145 oh six, hotel is listed in that chart, and the subnotes there say that it just, as a conditional use, hotels just have to comply with whatever their existing district regulation. So we're not, our intent was not to propose any new or more stringent rules for hotels. It was simply to change where they're permitted in the district. As for the question about the master plan, absolutely, the word hotel does not appear in the master plan, but one of the four sections of the master plan is to create a walkable downtown, and certainly having your hotel across the street from the place you're working for the day and up the street from the restaurants is a much more walkable downtown than getting bussed to the nearest hotel outside the city, a mile away across a freeway. And inherently, people staying at hotels don't have kitchens. They have to go out and seek food, and they have to go out and seek, well, we hope they go out and seek entertainment. They could just sit in their hotel room all night, but that adds to the potential number of pedestrians available to sustain a walkable downtown.
Well, I can respect that, but there was a comment that was made in the beginning that hotels can be destructive. So I guess, what does a city residence really want to see? And do they really want to see a hotel structure on Main Street Center? I just don't feel that's up to us to make that decision.
I think part of that is, my thoughts on that is, it would add some vibrancy to our downtown, and nothing that, not imagining a five, 10-story hotel, something that would be conducive, uh, similar to the height of the Hoover West Fact or something like that. But I thought it'd also be available to, you know, to residents or the hometown university, Washington University, give them an opportunity for, you know, families to come in for their weekends to see the kids, could be open to their, their exchange students who may not be able to live on campus, but they could be, that bridges could be made at local hotel. And of course, having 600 employees next door at DePaul might give opportunity for their employees to be temporarily housed in a nice location, in a safe location, in our downtown center, but add a sense of vibrancy to it, and something that I think, too, would, would fit into the, I think, the culture of our, of our, and climate of our, our, of our community. That was my impression of what we were thinking about. Just been having that as an opportunity, whether it would come to fruition, who knows? But if it would add some type of incentive to, uh, bring employment, let alone something new, I don't think it would be totally destructive. I think we have good safety forces and public safety and conservative laws and sanitation all be addressed. But I just thought it would be an opportunity or something available in the future if we are able to have that complex redeveloped with something that's really affordable and fit in with our lifestyle that I think we've become accustomed to.
To your comments, Mr. Sarah, I did look up other zonings around our area with, with same idea, what the, what a hotel is defined as, and then also where are they permitting it or not permitting it? And it seems very similar. The definitions are, you know, some define them as lodging, five or more guest rooms, offering transient overnight accommodations at a daily rate. It's very similar to definition of ours. Contains living and sleeping accommodations excluding cooking facilities, to your comment, Mr. Young, earlier, uh, for transient occupancy. Lodging is provided the public for compensation on a daily rate, which is open to occupancy for periods not more than 30 days, so that's similar to ours. So I did look, it's kind of similar community, in nice communities in our region, and they all kind of have that flavor for a definition, and some of them were permitted uses, um, in certain districts, and none, you know, they would now allow them in others, and then there were some of them with same idea that they would be conditional. So if they were, somebody wanted to come in and do a Main Street area, it was a conditional use. So it was very similar things, and I did not find anything that further, like, put any restrictions on it, because I wondered that myself after some of your comments last week. It's like, is it, is there any extra kind of definition or zoning restrictions? And none of them had anything, I think, to Mr. Young's point, once you define hotel in the beginning, whatever district it's conditional use in, then it takes on all those aspects of that section of the code, and it has to fit into them as far as square footage, setbacks, heights, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, parking, and so on. So I didn't find anything beyond, I would say, than even what we're, we currently have shown in the zoning code.
Into the concern about, is this what we want the downtown to look like? Having attended many of the master plan, planning things, we consistently heard, the public wants our downtown to look like Hudson or Fairlon or Stowe or Cuyahoga Falls. And for Cuyahoga Falls, you know, there's that Sheridan Suites right there on the corner of their town square, and I'll tell you, at least from my anecdotal evidence, attempting to drive to Cuyahoga Falls for dinner on a weekend, it's, there's a constant stream of people walking to and from the hotel, going to all the restaurants and the bars and the pins and filling the park next door with just traffic, and to me- And to me, it seemed like, at least from my attendance at those master plan meetings, that that's what people really seem to want. It's they want to drive into the town square on a weekend and see it full of people and full of life.
Well, and this will go, I mean, our recommendation, whatever direction we go, I mean, it goes before council, so the public at that time wouldn't hear about it. I mean, not, not that they don't already know that this meeting's happening tonight, but they'll have further opportunity to be discussed at council. So.
And since it's conditional, we'll come back to you guys if there was a
Correct.
potential hotel.
Exactly, yeah.
If it was that easy, we would have had it in our old the defined in hotel in there as a use and we never did because we're really a residential neighborhood city. So I, you know, I
And I think probably too, the when the zoning was clarified further and redefined, the administrations prior had no desire for hotels whatsoever.
Yeah, I mean, I think Mr. Sarah has struck on the dichotomy of the city is that
Yeah.
What we have heard from the master plans from nineteen ninety-two and two thousand twelve and twenty twenty-one to three is they want a vibrant downtown, but at the same time for thirty years, we prohibited apartments, which is how you create a density of people needed for a vibrant downtown. And for, I assume at least since two thousand three, maybe before then, we pretty much prohibited hotels. Granted, because of the experience we've had with some bad apples, but that also works against creating that vibrant downtown, because it limits your ability to get the density of people needed to create that.
The previous administrations also didn't have to deal with a largely unoccupied assault acreage of ninety-six acres that, that sits in the middle of the Main Street District. It was, it was light manufacturing and, and light industrial.
But I think communities like Hudson and Cuyahoga Falls are an example that you can have a primarily single-family residential community with a vibrant downtown, as long as you narrowly tailor your zoning to permit density
Right.
only in that downtown.
Dexter is a good example. Mr. does have a downtown.
I see your point, Tom. And as I've been through my journey as mayor, I've been always trying to be cognizant. How do we maintain a, a small, a small town charm? How do we maintain that charm, but yet continue to, to be, uh, to to have our community develop for sustainability? And, uh, and when we had that master plan, I don't think we even forward thinking about the possibility of a hotel. It, you know, it just never came up in discussions, or if it did, I don't even remember. But I know I've always tried to, that seems to be a, a journey that I've been experiencing, maintaining a sense of that small town, but yet how do we balance that with bringing, you know, developing economically for sustainability of our, our services we've all been accustomed to. I, I understand completely. And, uh, when, in our discussions, uh, as we look across the complex across the street from City Hall, was there an opportunity there that it, it, you know, that we could have a revenue stream and also add some kind of class to, to downtown and make it something that's going to be, uh, part of our, a destination. Would I envision maybe a nice restaurant at, 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 you know, where you could even walk off the street and go in or, uh, whether it's two or three story hotel, you know, I'm not sure how many rooms, you know? But something that could accommodate, like I said, families visiting Walsh University, you know, employees across the street, the Hall of Fame, uh, you know, timed. And, uh, and I, that's kind of the balance I've always been trying to weigh, because I think I've sensed that from many of our legacy, uh, residents and business owners. How do we still maintain our small businesses, support them, but also have that dichotomy that you're bringing forward of, again, generating the finances of revenue to take care of what we're, what we're used to. And, but yet still, make this a great, safe place to live, work, visit, retire and play. So I, I understand completely where you're coming from, I think.
Well, personally, Mayor, I think you've done a great job for the city. And
Thank you.
And we hope you continue. But I think we need to, in my, my opinion is we need to find out what is really going to happen to the complex across from City Hall. And then continue on with the growth of the city to look at things like hotels that then would support whatever's going to go on there. And, and that's why, I mean, North Canton's always been a residential in nature. And, and you raise a family and you venture out, if you got family coming in that they need to stay somewhere, you stay a mile away uh, off of seventy-seven where there's hotels that are, are currently there. So that's my only concern with, with this. And, and trying to define, define the word hotel. I know it's difficult. But it would be nice to know what the future for the city is also.
I have a word. It's called hope. I still think hope is a good thing. We're still in discussions with that that journey across the street.
Okay.
Quite well taken.
Other commission members, do you have thoughts, comments?
At this point, I, I don't think that, uh, North Canton is quite there yet to for a hotel to change to find lucrative to build here right now. Um, but I don't think it's a bad thing to make those changes to allow under conditional use. Some licenses. If that growth happens, then I think the hotel would naturally, naturally come along. It might even spur the further development of that complex. So it's money attracts a lot.
Okay. Any thoughts from the public at this time? Anyone like to speak on this?
Could we name it the Ditzer Hotel? Two, part two?
Reincarnated.
Okay. There's no further comments from the city or commission members? I would, I would just say I would second Mr. Milhouse's point. I don't think tomorrow, if this were to change, I don't think tomorrow somebody's gonna call and say, hey, I want to put a hotel in. But I, you know, I agree with the point that with it being a conditional use is a good thing, because if that opportunity arises, there's an avenue there and that, that door would already be open somewhat versus now somebody looks at it and would say, oh, well, they don't allow that, even if they had the idea. It says, I don't, you know, we don't allow that and then they have to reach out and it just takes a longer process for that person to maybe get to that level where they may want to do that and may. So this, I think, does open, open the door for some opportunity there in the future, definitely. Um, I agree. So if there's no other comments or questions, would entertain a motion on ordinance dash two zero two four for the, uh, change to the schedule of permitted uses to allow hotel as conditional use in Main Street Center districts?
I would motion to approve everything Mr. Daupes just stated.
Okay. I would second. Roll call, please, Randa?
Mr. Mahouson?
Yes.
Mr. Sarah?
No.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Daupes?
Yes. Okay. I don't believe we have any, anything else at this time unless Martin, if you have anything or anyone else?
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, okay. Uh, since there's nothing else, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
We have a motion to second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.